It's 7:00 PM on Wednesday, Thursday, May 1st, 2025. And I'm calling the East Point Planning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
This is Hall Rayford.
Here.
Mr. Stokes?
Here.
Who hit Stokes there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I sit here.
Ms. Yulinski here. Kimberly Naylor, Chairman's Vice Chair Sasek.
Here. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Set, the motion was made and seconded. Please call the roll.
This is Hall Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes. Next, we have the first hearing of the public. And this will be for anything that is not scheduled for a hearing of the public in regards to winter sausage and common citizens. So you'll get three minutes to speak. And there'll be a second opportunity at the end of the evening. If there's anybody that'd like to be heard, please go up to the podium and identify yourself. Okay, seeing nobody, I'm going to close the first hearing of the public. And are there any additions, deletions, or change, or amendments to the minutes?
Move we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Hall Rayford. Is there a second?
I'll support.
The second was made by Mr. Stokes. Please call the roll.
This is Hall Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes. Okay, before we go into the hearing of the public, I would like to ask Mr. Myers and Mr., I'm sorry, I'm gonna pronounce your name, Erbil.
That's correct.
I would appreciate it if you could, in layman's terms, explain to the audience and the public that may be listening in tonight why the recommendation is to deny the zoning change for winter sausage.
Sure. Yes, sir. So, as you know, the, um, the request is to zone the four parcels on Grashit where winter sausage is, their parking lot adjacent on fronting Crescentwood, the parking lot just north of their main facility, and then a new building that at one point was an apparel store. Per the East Point zoning ordinance, there's a set of standards that, a rezoning is essentially a, um, a change from one district to another which would allow different uses. Each zoning district is designated to have certain uses and is designated based on their, um, where they are in relation to things like residential uses and, and, um, other commercial uses where they are in addition to roads, how well the infrastructure can serve them. This rezoning, the petition is to change the rezoning. Three of them are currently zoned MU3, which is a mixed-use district, which allows retail and residential. The other one, the parcel that is fronting Crescentwood is owned MU1, which is a less intense mixed-use district. The request is to rezon all of them to light industrial, which would allow all of them to be used in the future, now and in the future, for a range of industrial uses, basically any industrial use that is permitted in the city of East Point. When evaluating a request like this, it is, the zoning ordinance and really best practice says that you should consider how the requested zone interacts with the plans that are on the books. And the zoning ordinance also provides a series of standards that the, that the planning commission should consider when making its recommendation to just, to think through what, what the appropriate action is. Based on the zoning ordinance as it has been adopted, based on the master plan as it has been adopted, there's room to consider whether conditions have evolved since the master plan has passed that might justify a rezoning. But the, uh, in your packets, we put together a review that evaluates this request against, um, each standard. And the, really, the first and foremost one is you have a future land use map in your master plan. That is the primary tool to inform decisions like this. When someone, when there's a request to change the zoning that is on the books, the future land use map as part of the adopted master plan should provide some guidance. So, um, in your packets, we, we wrote a review about how this, the, the future land use map in, um, in the adopted master plan designates this site as regional mixed use. So it, it is indicating that this land in the future should be used for commercial uses. It's also part of a central business district, um, potential change area. And the master plan describes that change area sort of adjacent to the intersection of Nine Mile and Grashit, going down Grashit and, and north on Grashit, as, um, an area where walkable, commercial sort of uses should be encouraged to develop. So on, on that standard, if you consider any, all of the light industrial uses that might be enabled by the eventual, by, by the rezoning of this. In the short term, it would allow winter sausage to remain in operation exactly how it is. But the rezoning is permanent. So if they, um, sold off a parcel or, or moved somewhere else, that land would be rezoned without a similar hearing like this. And another industrial use could by right be, be moved in. There's several other standards. This proposal and the, and by evidence of the fact that the business has been operating there successfully for a while, things like compatibility with the street system, sufficient public utilities and services, we think that that, um, that, those uses can be met. I think the main concerns are, um, the idea of an expanded industrial use across all of these parcels, its proximity to residential uses. And really, the, the main thing is the incompatibility with the future land use map. That's, um, very high level. I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about the individual standards.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Erbil? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Myers, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
He did a wonderful job.
All right, thank you then. In that case, I will open the first hearing of the public up in regards to winter sausage. And again, you will get three minutes. And please identify yourself if you have anything that you'd like to say. So the first hearing of the public regarding winter sausage is now open. Is your, I, I'm sorry, is her mic on?
Sorry. Teresa Tribune. I live, I have the house, the first house off of Grashit on Crescentwood. And that's what I was wondering is how it's gonna affect the people on that street if they change it to a light industrial. I don't see that much difference. Mixed use, they can use as light industrial, but I don't know that we want our factory there as something light industrial. And if they use the, they're using the parking lot. I'm not sure where the building, it says they want to build onto it. If they build over the parking lot, I don't know where their cars are gonna be because that's, they're already parking on the streets when they can't fit into their parking lot.
Did you have anything else?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Are you okay?
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I'm Lee Stevens. I'm an architect that's worked with winter sausage for a number of years in their buildings. And I wanted to thank you for having us tonight. You know, we were here a year ago and proposed an expansion to the west. Well, we were all set to build that and ready to go. And the property to the north came available. So winter sausage decided to buy that land and go in a little different direction. There are a couple of things I'd like, first, I want to just talk a little bit about winter sausage. Winter sausage, as you know, has been here since 1950. So this is 75 years they've been on this property. And they're probably before East Point, it was East Point. The facility is a food processing plant. And it's USDA approved, which means they're working with meat and they're processing meat. And that's what they process. And that's the only thing they process. The USDA inspects their building all the time. And all work is done inside the building in environmentally controlled spaces. So it's interior work is done in that way. And they have 50 skilled employees that work with the food. So they got 50 employees on the site and they, not all at once, but all total. And they have this building that they've used for a long time. And they would like to stay on this property and keep processing what they're doing for the next generation or two, which puts us for another long period. Now, a year ago, we came, we, we are MU3. And we have this A classification, which means we can stay there and we can expand. Tonight, I'll talk, I can talk a little more about them, but I really want to talk about the zoning. We're really not asking for all of this property to be zoned like this. We don't own the motel. We bought the piece right north of our main building. So if you look at the west line that goes across, we don't want to change the parking zoning at all. That's fine, that's our parking. We own the house directly west of that parking lot. And so we're really not changing that at all. What we're really requesting is the, what we'd really like to do, I guess, and really request is we'd like to get the piece of property which the little building is on there, 16, Ensign 16 there. We'd like to get that zone so we can expand that way. And that's where we would be able to expand our business. Now, the reason we want to expand our business is all, uh, I work in a lot of the food industry myself. And what's happened really in the produce and the meat and the poultry and the fish, the more we buy machinery, machinery takes space. So Bosco Pizza is a perfect example. They had a building where making pizza by hand on tables. So they're using a eight-foot table making pizza. They moved and worn, built a new plant and have all kinds of machinery. So the machine that makes the pizza now is over 120 feet long. So what happens with machinery, it takes more, a lot more space, really. And it's, uh, and you get a better product because it's handled uniformly. By having that property, allowing us to build over there allows us to use more machinery and, and have a better facility and a better product. So what we're really asking for tonight, and I, I, is to have that property zoned or, or allow us to build where that little office, that little building was and that parking there, build on that property. Definitely not going back. And definitely, we don't have anything to do with the hotel, motel there. That would allow us to expand our building some and make it work better for us. Now, we, we know that your future plans and the zoning doesn't really exactly match up to us, but we've been here for so long. And we have, our buildings always look good. Our buildings are maintained well. They have a great business going. It's a great location. They'd like to stay in East Point, but they would like to be able to have more manufacturing going on. We are a regional distributor, regional. And so we are close to our primary distributor, which is Lapari. And we're also close to Eastern Market and all that by being on Grashit and being close to 94 and 696. So we like the regional idea. We like the, the city here. We like what you've done with us always in the past. And we know we're asking for maybe something that doesn't exactly match your master, your 2040 plan. We do plan on being here in 2040 though, so, uh, we'd like to stay. Let me tell you a little bit about what, um, we think is the, um, what we'd like to do. The L, the light industrial zoning is, allows us to be here. The M3 zoning with this Class A non-conforming allows us to be here. But the problem we have, the property we just purchased is not, has not a Class A non-conforming on it. So I think we have a couple of ideas. One is can we, can we zone it out? One, light industrial for the life of, of winter sausage, not forever, for the life of them. Or can we do something different to allow us to expand to that piece right to the north? We're not taking down the, there's a little building there now that's about 26 by 70 feet. We'd want to probably, we'd want to expand that back and connect to our building. So that's really where we are. And we'd just like to kind of solve the situation so we don't, the, the advantage of building there is building that addition that you've approved is that addition you approved is to be two stories to really make it work. One story obviously is better for manufacturing. So by going there, we can keep one story and it really works better for us. That's why we kind of put a halt on the other thing. So that's, that's kind of where we are with it. And that's what we'd like to kind of, we'd like to solve it tonight on what's the best way to move and what's the best we can do because we'd like to stay here, you know?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Oh, okay. She arrived at seven. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard in regards to winter sausage?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Yeah, it's kind of confusing up there because that first, that top building there, that's the Imperial Motel, the long, skinny one. I think they're only talking about the little one. The second one down there is what they're talking about. Back in 2019, when the master plan was done, that land use originally was industrial for all of winter sausage. And I'm assuming historically, it was always an industrial piece of property. The zoning change that we did in June of 2023 made it MU3. In November 2nd, 2023, they were approved for a Class A non-conforming designation to allow them to continue and have the building be eligible for expansion. So I guess I have a question. Does that mean that they can expand their property to include that small building that they just purchased? Is that covered under the original Class A non-conforming designation that they already have? And then last year at the July 16th, 2024 City Council meeting, uh, City Council approved establishing an industrial development district to support winter sausage in their expansion project through the approval of an industrial facilities tax exemption from the city and state. Ian McCain spoke on this and he stressed how important winter sausage is to our community. And two residents also spoke in support of winter sausage in their expansion. You know, I did read through McKenna's reasons for not changing the zoning. And I know that they're talking about this central business district with the potential intensity change area to create a walkable commercial area with diverse usages and increased nighttime population. This area is winter sausage. There's a car dealership. There's the Imperial Motel, which I suppose has some nighttime population going on there. Across the street on Grashit, it's not an office building. That is Keystone Auto and the gravel parking lot that everybody's fighting over. And now another reason was the proximity to existing residential uses. This does not look like it's going to make any of their facility any closer to residents that are already there now. I don't see how it would be impacting them. You know, it's the same distance now if they're just taking that little building next to it. You know, again, we've done this before. We just did it on 10 Mile in Tuscany. We went from MU1 to light industrial to put a cell phone tower, which is right next to somebody's house. You can actually see on the picture that they had of the property, someone's house right there. You know, we, we've done this for other things. So I'm not sure, you know, if changing the zoning isn't the appropriate way to do it, is there some other way that we can get them, this building, so that they can expand and continue to be in our community? Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Seeing nobody, the first hearing of the public in regards to winter sausage. Your sausage is closed. Do any of the commissioners have any questions in regards to this? Well, I guess I'll start then. And I don't know if this should be directed to you, Mr. Myers, or Mr., or you, Mr. Erbil. But, um, some of the concern I have from reading everything is that, yes, I know that there have been some accommodations made in, in the past, but that was in regards to the main building. With the light industrial that they're looking to have the zoning changed for the, this building they just purchased, that is right next door, it's attached, common wall to the motel, if I recall right. And the light industrial has a little more restrictions when it comes to its proximity to residential areas, if I recall right. So I'm, plus, there's some other things we, we won't get into tonight, but some concerns about things that have occurred in the past. My concern is that if we make this light industrial for that one building, it's going to open up a potential can of worms in the future when other buildings are looking to expand. The accommodation, if I understood it correctly, was to expand off the back and up. And then it would still be within the MU3 and MU1 for the parking lots. So is there a clarification that you'd like to offer us?
So I think everything that you said is true. The, it is that the small building in question does share a party wall, a common wall with the motel used to the north of it. And, um, I, I guess, just by way of clarification, the, the application was for, to rezon all four parcels to light industrial, which is why we're talking about, uh, uh, into the future and enabling the uses. Perhaps there is a reduced approach or, or something else focused to the north. But we evaluated the application based on whether or not it's a good idea to rezon all four parcels as, as a whole to light industrial. So does that, does that answer your question or no?
I think a little bit. I, I still have some real concerns about changing the zoning to light industrial. I'm just worried about the long-term effect it could have with other businesses deciding to use that as an example of, well, you did it here, why can't you do it for me now?
Sure.
And we really have to consider what the scope of the master plan, especially because we're getting ready to go into developing a new master plan for the community. And yes, I understand the business has been here for over 50 years. But like everything else in the world, you change and adjust and adapt to the new rules and regulations that come about. So what was acceptable 50 years ago certainly is not necessarily acceptable in this day and age. So would somebody like to make a motion? Make the motion that we denied the rezoning for L1 in regards to this building?
Yes. Mr. Chair, this is just the, uh, the public hearing portion of the meeting. We're not under actual new business where a vote would be made.
I'm sorry?
We're not under the actual section of new business where a vote would be made. This is just the public hearing section.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, then if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
So I, leave statements again. So I think what we're saying is that L1 zoning is really not the way to go. And I, and I think we aren't really looking, we were never looking at zoning at all, L1. That apparently was a misinterpretation. But we're not really looking to say, hey, we want to zone at L1. What we're really asking for, we'd like to use that property to the north with our business. Now, if that, if that, it's already MU3, that piece of property. If we can add the, uh, if they can study it, can we add the, uh, what, what is called the non-conforming part to that piece of property? So it matches our piece of property? Then that really solves all we want to do is be able to use that piece of property adjacent to our building. So I don't know if that's something we can do tonight or not.
I will have to verify with our building department manager and our planner. Oh, go ahead.
I was trying to confirm something. I apologize, I did not hear the question.
So he was wondering if there's an option, you know, to keep that as MU3 and then have the, the accommodation or whatever carry over to that piece of property also?
I think we can study that. I, I think, um, part of the, part of the concern about utilizing the building that shares a common wall with a residential use to the north is that that residential use exists and, um, industrial, industrial uses that, um, share the wall have the potential to impact it. So, um, I think maybe it's, it seems worthy of further discussion for alternatives, perhaps?
Okay. Mr. Myers?
Mr. Chair, the, the subject again would really be on what we saw as the application. And it was asking for all four. And therefore, there's the, the dimension that goes way beyond simply the purchase. And therefore there's the dimension that goes way beyond simply the purchase building that they purchased without verifying if they could get it to be used prior to purchasing it, if they could get it as a Class A addition. And so again, the health issues or the safety issues is really being that that is a line divided by only a wall. It's not a parcel space, it's not a separation space. But the question, we'd have to go back and take a look at seeing what ordinances grant you that right to split the parcel and just give that one piece of building and that land over to a, it would still probably have to go back to a light industrial A use, not just an A extension. And that's the concern that we would have.
So, so basically you're saying there's really is no way to make it a mixed use three?
And light industrial A class.
Okay.
That would be for you to clarify.
Well, yeah, it's zone MU3, so they were, they were granted by the commission and council, the Class A designation, because if, if, if you were to try to open this use on this site right now, if it didn't already exist, they wouldn't be able to. But since it hasn't been existing, the city said, yes, we would like it to continue to exist in this space. I, I think what I would say is consideration of expansion to the north had only and not rezoning everything else. The implications if winter sausage were to close is that currently all of that space is currently still zoned at mixed use. So another industrial use could not come in and start operating in this building or on this site. If, if all four parcels were rezoned, it could. The, I, I think, I don't know that I'm prepared to recommend a path forward or I know all the implications of expanding to the north only or modifying that Class A nonconforming status to allow the use of the parcel to the north. It's probably worthy of study, but I don't think we can do it tonight.
Lee Stevens again. I think because of kind of the confusion, we'd like to withdraw then our request. We'd like to withdraw the request of rezoning the property.
Okay, is that doable?
It would be doable, Chair, but it would need to be done during the new business, new business section of the meeting. Because we're still in the public hearing.
Sure, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, then moving on to public hearing B, which is receiving comments from this, for the special land use for Common Citizens and the medical marijuana facility on Grashit. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard?
Thank you, Commissioner Mike Beck. I am the Director of Government Affairs, Government and Community Affairs for Common Citizen. Appreciate your time. Just wanted to kind of brief us, to brief you to how we got here and what we're, what we're looking, you're looking at tonight. We did have a site plan submitted. It was reviewed and the council, in its wisdom, did approve an adult use ordinance, but one of the caveats to that is you had to be open by December 31st. We brought our architect in, or I mean, our construction team and our architect team in to look at our plan to see if we could get it all done. And we really came back to a conclusion that said, that would be really difficult with the original one. So we came in and talked to city staff and had a meeting and said, hey, if we can modify it and we can do this a little bit differently, what do you think about that? And then it was along the lines of, can you administratively approve that? And they said, no, we need to go back through the regular site plan review process. So that's why we're here with the site plan review. The big thing is we believe it's able to get open by the time now. If we can go with this site plan, it'll rehab an existing building. It will create more of a buffer than the original plan, actually, to the group, I think it's to the south, I believe. And, and we aren't changing anything on the community benefits. We still have a pretty robust community benefit plan that is committing, I believe, $100,000 a year for the next five years to do parks or whatever the city needs to do. And our team is here, I'm here to answer any of your questions. We've got our civil engineer here as well, and we've got our architect here as well. So if you've got any questions for us, that's, just wanted to let you know how we got here, why we got here. And we, you know, we're working with the city to try to get in front of you and hopefully answer your questions. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Pelosi, Point Resident. Okay, so when you have a special land use, you have to have a public hearing notice published two weeks prior, which was in the McComb Daily on, let's see, April 15th. The special land use approval in the public hearing notice said it was for a medical marijuana provisioning center. The application that they have submitted is for medical and adult use marijuana. I feel that there is a big difference between the two, not only the medical, you know, you need certain criteria for the medical, but those facilities close at 8:00 PM. Brian Etzel, who was the attorney for Common Citizen, was one of the attorneys that asked that if, if they were going to be adult use, that they'd be open later than 8:00 PM. And so city council went ahead and made adult use facilities open till 10:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and midnight on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, which is kind of out of the norm. I mean, Detroit, Royal Oak, Harper Woods, they all close at 10:00 PM. Roseville, Centerline, Hazel Park, Ferndale, they all close at 9:00 PM. So this public hearing notice is for five parcels, 24545, 503, 509, 515, and 525 for Grashit. The application is only for 24525, and the site plan has been changed to remove 24545 from the site plan, which is the northernmost parcel, which I'm kind of confused because I would think if we were going to remove anything, it would be the southernmost parcel, which is right next door to a licensed childcare center. You know, they received site plan approval back in March of 2023. January 11th of 2024, they received a one-year extension. They had until March 2nd of 2025 to submit a new site plan or begin construction. New site plan was not received until April 1st of this year. I'm not even sure that you can really, you know, you, the public hearing notice isn't accurate. It's for medical marijuana facility period. They're asking for medical and adult use. So I would think that either you would need to deny it or maybe table this and put a correct public hearing notice so people are aware of what it is that you are deciding on. Just my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Chair.
And I appreciate the homework, but one of the, I believe we had until May, I think, to return. We got our site plan in on time per the city, so that was done. And, and the, the medical versus adult use, city council put an adult use ordinance in and the ordinance actually said the three medical marijuana conditional licensees would get adult use if they were open with their medical marijuana. I just, I believe that's, I'm correct with that. So it is started as a medical marijuana. There is no adult use until the medical marijuana facility is built. So it had to meet all the criteria, get done and be open by, I believe, December 31st to then apply for an adult use marijuana license. And that was done by council. So I do think there's some semantics in there, but I do, we did submit site plan in time and it is, has to be medical, has to be opened as medical, licensed as a medical, and then we can apply for adult use.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Seeing none, the second, the hearing of the public for Common Citizens is closed. New business, considered the motion with recommendations from city, for city council regarding the rezoning of 22001 and 22011 Grashit Winter Sausage. Are there any commissioners that have any comments that they'd like to make?
I think we heard a lot of comments during the, uh, the public hearing. The public hearing, but I, I just say my thoughts are, I know we did the, the modification with the NAGA Form A, and I'm not thinking we were complying with L1 with the fact that the adjoining wall, so I would be in compliance to think that it would be denied as was recommended. However, we did get the request that they may, you know, rescind it, so we'll just have to wait and see.
Right. Anybody else offer, have anything to offer?
I was going to say, if we're being asked to reconsider because winter sausage wants to withdraw the request, I'm not sure if a motion to deny.
Right, that's what I would say. Mr. Albright?
Mr. Chair, if the petitioner still is indicating to this body that it wishes to to withdraw its application, somebody on the commission can simply make a motion to grant the request by the petitioner to withdraw the petition.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, so the motion to grant the rescinding of the petition, of the plan from the petitioner has been made by Mrs. Mary Hall Rayford. Is there a second?
A second?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, and that was Commissioner Moody. Would the, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mailer, Nailor, would the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Nailor?
Yes.
Ms. Jonski, yes? Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business B, consideration for the, a motion with regards to the recommendations of the city, to city council regarding the medical marijuana, recreational marijuana facility at 22, I'm sorry, 2, I had the address here. Oh, here we go, 24525 Grashit Avenue, Common Citizens. I know that the recommendation was to approve, but I, I have some real concerns and I'm really not comfortable tonight making a decision because, first of all, I haven't been here from the get-go, but I understand that an original site plan was submitted. It went before the, the steering committee for scoring and all of the applicants were scored and this was one of them. And now here we are, basically almost two and a half years later, changing that site plan. And the other two facilities, I believe, have been moving forward and I'm just concerned about the backlash. Would it be appropriate for us to request a special meeting to discuss this further so that we can look more heavily into what the best way to go is?
The planning commission could schedule a special meeting, so this, this, this agenda item would be tabled and a special meeting sometime in the future would be, would be scheduled to then accommodate that tabling request. That's one option. Did, Chair, did the commission want to hear from the city planner regarding the, the application first before making further decisions?
Sure.
Okay. The applicant gave a, gave an overview of what they're doing. I have the, the new site plan that they submitted. As was mentioned in public, it is true that the original application considered the redevelopment of the entire block that's shown on that, on that site plan. This is a landscape plan from the submission, but what is different, three years ago, what was approved was a redevelopment of the entire block with, I believe, a new building, the construction of a new building. What is now proposed is to renovate the former Joe's Music Building, leave the former car dealership on the north side in place and redevelop the, the southern portion of the site by removing the existing buildings south of Joe's Music and redeveloping those into parking. And then similar to the original submission, redeveloping the, the rear parking lot on Valley Avenue. From a site plan perspective, there are minor inconsistencies that the, that we put in your, in your packet and that the engineer also pointed out. The applicant did send us a response. I think from the site plan perspective, those things can be worked through administratively, but I, I do think it's appropriate to consider that the original special land use approval was based on a larger project, a $700 million project, I think was the number, that redeveloped the entire block. No, okay. Okay, that was in the, regardless of the number, just, just pointing out that this consideration is for not the same project, it's for the smaller redevelopment.
I guess my concern still is what's going to happen to the vacant auto sales building then? We're going to have an empty building sitting on that stretch of the, of the block?
I, I believe it's, it's been removed from this application entirely, so no change.
But the license was granted on a plan that said the whole block was going to be redeveloped.
That's my understanding, yes.
And I have some, I have some real concerns about the fact that if we grant this and we turn around and say, well, here we are, three years into it, two and a half years into it, and now all of a sudden we're going to change the parameter for you. What does that leave the city holding when the other two licensees that have been striving to meet the deadline? Mr. Albright, is there a, a chance that they could turn around and possibly try to sue the city?
Unfortunately, there's always a possibility that someone can sue the city. There is pending litigation involving the city's adult use marijuana ordinance. It was filed shortly after the city council made a motion to pass the ordinance. Not too long afterward, a third party not affiliated with the existing medical marijuana permit holders filed litigation in the McComb County Circuit Court. That case is currently pending in front of Judge Bjornat. Along with the complaint that was filed, the plaintiff also filed a motion for a temporary injunction or restraining order, basically saying that while that litigation is pending, the city is not to take any steps with proceeding with implementation of its adult use marijuana ordinance. That hearing date, I believe, is scheduled for Monday, May 19th. Also, in the meantime, at least one party has joined the plaintiff as an intervening plaintiff, and I believe two, possibly all three of the existing medical marijuana permit holders have intervened as defendants in the case. Their position, of course, is that the ordinance is valid, it is constitutional and should be continually, continue to be implemented. But in the meantime, city administration is not. is not, uh, accepting any, any applications. In fact, city administration hasn't even taken a step to create any applications, given this pending litigation, because right now, we just don't know what is going to happen with it. And so also, that also calls in a question, I know I've had several people call me, what happens with the, the December 31st deadline that the council set with the existing, uh, medical marijuana permit holders? No one knows, just because of this pending litigation. Of course, we believe that the ordinance, uh, is constitutionally sound, uh, it went through many, many rewrites and, uh, many, many, uh, hours being considered by the city council, uh, so again, we believe it is lawful, uh, but again, it's in the hands of the Circuit Court. Uh, there's also the issue of, uh, if the city is successful, and I believe they will be successful in defending the litigation, I've already, already been told by at least one party, possibly affiliated with the plaintiff, that they have every intention of filing an appeal of that Circuit Court decision, and if they're not successful in the Court of Appeals, they will, um, uh, apply for leave with the Michigan Supreme Court. So, again, unfortunately, this could be a very, very drawn-out process, uh, awaiting judicial decisions.
Okay, so, Attorney Albright, let me make sure I understand this. So basically, you're saying we can't do anything?
You could, because what the applicants are asking to proceed under is their existing medical marijuana, uh, licensing or permit, uh, that's not an issue. There's been no challenges to the city's medical marijuana, uh, ordinance, it's just, uh, it involves the adult use ordinance.
Well, that was gonna be another question, because if the application is saying medical slash adult, you know, how do we get from medical to adult use? I would feel more comfortable if the application was at least, um, conforming instead of one, a medical and saying adult, because that's confusing all by itself to me.
Does the applicant want to respond to that concern?
Let me take the mic, please.
Well, I mean, I, the application in, in reality is only for medical because the way the, and the attorney will have to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the way, the only way we can get adult use per the ordinance, which we have intervened on behalf to work with the city, our team, in defending it, um, the only way that we could become adult use is if we were open as medical, so that, you know, the site plan review is for medical, and that's with the conditional licensure, when on December, if by December 31st we're all open, and I know the other guys are working, we anticipate being open first with this site plan, quite frankly, um, but the, it is medical, because there is no adult use unless we open with this site plan as medical. So, you know, the semantics of it, we are designing it to be both, because we believe it will get open in time and then apply to the city once we are open medically, and then the council will review that application, I believe, and grant us the medical, that's what the adult use ordinance says, uh, but it really is a medical site plan review, because that's the only thing that we have available to us at this point. We can't even, and no one, none of the three of us can be adult use without opening with medical licensure, so all of our site plans are medical.
And that, that is a correct statement.
So my, my concern then to you is, you, you've known since November of 2022, actually, that you were receiving, uh, one of the medical marijuana licenses, and you're saying now that if we don't agree to the revised site plan, you feel there's no way you're gonna be able to open by December 31st?
Well, we,
Am I, am I correct in assuming that?
We feel it'll be awfully difficult, so we worked with our construction team and our architect team, and we developed a different plan, we, we know that that building will still be there and it'll be available, I think with, with our development, that building will become very valuable to someone for another business, whatever that business will be, because our, if you've looked at the plans, our, our, our buildings across the state are, are pretty well-known for how nice they look. But we also think it's the rehab of the other building, and this, keep in mind, this stuff, our thought process was this even before tariffs, so we, you know, any of us that are looking to build right now, we don't know how steel's gonna get here and all those things, so it's a, it's a rough time to try to do a development of any sort in any community. Uh, my friends across the state that, that work in municipal development, um, they're saying it's just a lot of things are on hold right now, because people just don't know how things are gonna work, right? So we do think it's a, it's a great plan, it's a, it's a, it's a tweak to it, it's really, we consider it more of a modification, we're not changing our community benefits. Again, the, the, the packet that we sent in, uh, contributing into the city that's with our medical application isn't gonna change, um, we, we think it's gonna be a wonderful, uh, project, we actually added buffer and landscaping to the south, um, that wasn't in the original site plan, um, so we are really trying to aesthetically move forward, I don't believe, you know, I, I think the attorney, Attorney Albright said that anybody can sue for anything, I can't imagine anybody from the other two folks that are gonna have any kind of complaints, it's just about the process. So, um, yes, went, but to your point, all the way back to the question, sorry about that, I was rambling, but it is a medical site plan, because that's all we can have right now. Correct, Attorney Albright?
That's correct.
Okay, so, excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Is this still what the building is gonna look like, and do you have possession of all the property?
We have the property under contract to close once we move forward, so we've been paying, we've been paying carrying fees on all the properties, correct?
Including the auto sales building?
The plan including the auto sales place took a substantial amount, yes.
Okay.
This is just a, a site plan that our team came together and said, we wanna get going, we wanna move fast, and wanna get open in time and meet all the criteria, um, you know, one of the, we've heard quite a bit about, you know, medical, we've had a lot of time, I can tell you the medical market right now in Michigan is
Okay.
0.2% of the sales of the entire market, so the adult use market is 99.8% of sales. So, there is no one building just a purely medical, um, so it's, it's, it's a difficult time in the, in the market, one of the things we thought, we can get moving quicker, even with the down market, we can keep our community benefits up, this is just, we're excited, we wanna come here, can't wait to get here, this was just a plan that we thought worked for everyone.
So is this rendering still accurate?
That, that rendering on the new application is a new rendering, that is still accurate to what it's going to look like in ten, we do have, it was flat on 2D elevations, um, that is a new rendering that actually is for the renovation of the building.
Okay, so it hasn't changed all that much?
We, we did not change the look, we wanted to keep that with the same, the same look and everything as we had before, yes. That was the intent, it's the branding of the, of Common Citizens, and so we wanted to keep the brand.
Okay. So I don't disagree with Vice Chair Sasek in that you were approved for medical, and yeah, I get the timing, and you could've avoided all these tariffs had you started on time, I, I also have a hard time with that.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Myers, we heard from our, our city planner, I would definitely like to hear from our building manager.
Let me see if I can clear up some of the, the conversation from my perspective as the building official and the developer of this, these projects that we're working on. I think your concerns rise in the fact that they have changed the site plan significantly from what they won in a, an elective of multiple businesses trying to get a, a, a seat in the, in the city to run a business, uh, and in doing so, they took it on what they presented previously almost two years ago, and that plan is now being asked to be changed, and your concerns would be, how does that really fit? If this was this plan in motion two years ago, would they have won the point of vote election to be one of the top three players? And now we're this late in the game and we're being asked, this company is being, is asking, can we re-modify the entire layout design instead of do what we said we'd do with the entire block? What's happening on reverse is now that it's in work of building, each of the other organizations that are building are being held to the letter to what was requested of, by their plans to be approved as a marijuana facility by the building department, and so I have not granted them any leeway from where they were supposed to demolish something originally, and now they still must, and so I think your concern might have something to do with, would this still be voted as the third chair or one of the top three chairs of, uh, corporations with this change of design, layout, and reuse of the land compared to what they gave and offered, and then were approved an extension a year ago to hold the same position? So I think the real issue isn't all the beautiful modifications, it's not even violating the zoning code of how he had to plan review it, it has to deal with, we've now redesigned the entire intent of what we were putting on the ground, and when the people who were making the voting commission were looking and deciding what was going to change in our city on that block, and now that's changing, and that's what I think you have to consider, how far that would change, so if you wanted to table this conversation to deep, dive deeper into what would the other people that made this vote, and how close were those votes, and how much change of a numbers would this be if they said, we're not taking that building down anymore, we're gonna keep it, and we might even give it back to the owner and do something with it later. I think that's your subject of, 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 of discussion as the planning commission, more than beautiful designs, well-laid out, meets our zoning code, but it changed from what they got their voting rights to be in the, in this game in the first place, two years ago, one year ago, and that's why they're at the table, and that's what you have to consider, what does that do in changing this layout from what they actually got the votes to be in the play, in the game in the first place?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any comments or, or questions?
I, um, have a question that was initially asked, what happens to the building that's no longer included? And I know you said the community benefits stay the same, but now we have the beautification less, the one structure that, um, was part of the site plan originally, so I think a bigger question to me would be what happens to that structure now that is gonna be abandoned if this site plan is approved? Whether or not your approval was based on that, I'm not certain, um, in the top three selection, but I think the bigger picture for our city would be what happens to that building with the beautification happening next to it, um, and we have a community benefit packet in place, what could be used on that structure so it's not an eyesore after we were expecting some beautification?
Thank you.
So it would not be our intent to close on that parcel at this point, we would just lose the money that we've paid for that owner, so that owner would still have that, that property. I think we've paid some carrying costs, it's a lot, it's, it's over, over half million dollars so far on that property, so that's, that's where we would be, it would not, we would not close on that parcel.
Okay.
We would close on all the others and continue.
So with that, um, Chair, I, my, my decision would be, I think we move forward, yes, there's a massive, uh, late hour change in the plans, um, I don't know what all the building costs you've reviewed, I'm sure that's contributed, as well as, uh, materials you may get access to between now and the deadline, cause you're closer, I see some of the other projects are just starting, it seems that everyone's kinda at the end, uh, just getting started toward the deadline, um, but, um, I think, um,
I know.
what you're rendering as what you will do, uh, is similar to the beginning, and I think, um, it still would be of value to the city of East Point in that location, that's my thoughts.
We, we agree.
My biggest concern right now, and I, I really do feel we need to table this, we, I would personally like to table this, have a special meeting, and at that special meeting, I would really appreciate it if we could ask the member, any of the members of the steering committee that, you know, granted these scorings, to be present to just run this by them, because we're talking apples and oranges here, what they approved is not what we're receiving, and we've got two other licensees that are living up to the letter of their commitment, so, Mr. Albright, would it be appropriate for me to make a motion to table?
Chair, you could make a motion to table, I would, if that's gonna happen, though, I would, uh, suggest that it be for a date certain, as opposed to just put it out there indefinitely, so if there's gonna be a motion to table, it needs to be, if, if the maker of the motion is going to table it for a special meeting, then, the, that, that motion should be two-part, it should be to schedule a special meeting and then table this agenda item to that special meeting.
Okay. So I will make, I would like to make a motion to table this decision right now, and then we will schedule a special meeting where everybody can attend, and at that time also ask the scoring committee to be present.
Vice Chair, is that for the special land use or the site plan?
Um, it's actually gonna wind up being both, isn't it?
I just think we need everything on the record.
Mr. Vice Chair, I, I just think you need to, you, uh, make two motions for each agenda item, they could be identical.
You should, you should, you should, Chair, you should set a date for the special meeting.
Okay.
So everyone can check their calendars, like I said, it's a two-part,
Sure.
And then once we have that date, then, uh, motion to table this agenda item to that,
Okay. I think we need probably two weeks, I'm looking. It would be, it would be the evening, and I'm kinda looking at the week, if it works for you guys, I'm looking at the week of, um, either the week of the 12th through the 15th, or the 19th through the 22nd.
Would you wanna keep it consistent with Thursday, then, and 15th?
That would probably work if it works for everybody else.
The, the 15th, I don't know, is, are there any planning commit, or ZBA, is there a ZBA meeting that on the 15th? Yeah, planning commission is always the first Thursday of the month in East Point, and then the, the third Thursday is always a, a ZBA meeting if there is gonna be, if there is agenda items to be, uh, discussed.
So how about the 22nd?
There is a ZBA agenda for that Thursday.
On the 15th?
Yes.
Okay, so, does the 22nd work?
It'd be open.
22nd works for me, I was just looking, you know, for that entire week, uh,
Okay.
I can make the 22nd.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we schedule a special meeting in regards to the site plan and special land use for common citizens for, uh, 7:00 PM on May 22nd. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, secretary, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms., Mrs. Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Ms. Nailor?
Yes.
Ms. Jelinski, yes?
All right. And now we're gonna have a motion to table a decision on tonight's discussion of the special land use and site plan. Would somebody like to make that motion, or I can make it?
And if we could just say this is regarding, uh, under, um, uh, new business, uh, it's going to be, uh, six, uh, sub, um, B and C.
Okay, so, and this is in regards to six sub B and C? D, I'm sorry, C and D? D, I'm sorry, C and D?
No, B and C.
B and C, I had, I did have it right the first time.
You did.
So we want another motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to table, under new business, section A, B and C, we'd like to table that to a special meeting.
The 22nd?
That's for the 22nd.
Let's be just tabling it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded, please call the roll.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall-Raiford?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes? Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes. Okay, D, the 2025 Master Plan Project.
We met this afternoon with the company that was hired, and that has officially been our starting point today. The first series of informations we'll be gathering to create a list of stakeholders, subdivision, subcommittees from multiple businesses, plans, citizens, as well as the planning commission. Those things will be done in the next several weeks as we look at then having bi-monthly, we'll have a meeting every two weeks with the administration and where the team is going. And the really, the first three to four months is impacting all the data, information, and gathering. It's all the surveying of different groups, the stakeholders that we think we need to, the population that we need to, and then they can begin to grow from there. So the first launches has started today on May 1, and we'll begin to meet and organize the strategy, starting with stakeholders, starting with people to put in subcommittees, departments, and groups for surveying. They'll be beginning to evaluate what types of surveys and where is the best way to present them, what is the best medium to present them, and how frequently do they need to present them? And that'll gather in the next couple of months, statistics that they can begin to evaluate, process, and begin to, to build a, a program for the next five-year master plan.
Maybe as to the company that we have contracted to work with for engagement?
Pardon me?
What company have we engaged to work with? Are you able to share for our community engagement?
I don't know what the letters stand for, I just wanted to make sure I got them correct. TPMA. And they are an exciting organization, I, we think, at this point. They have multiple members of staff working, they'll put foot, feet on the ground as often as they need. They have two major senior players that will work on two different dimensions. One obviously is the Economic Master Plan, the Economic Development Program in Businesses and Strategies. And then they have a division that they'll be developing and creating and evaluating for residential development as well. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Myers? It's going to be a tough endeavor, but a good one.
Anytime you get the chance to be a part of the city when they're ready to dream for the future and make a vision that can change not only our lives, but strengthen the lives of the people that come after us, it should always be exciting to people. When you get the chance to plant something so solid in the ground that it changes and supports the lives 10 to 15 years from now, that should just make your life worth living.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. All right, is there anything else, Mr. Myers?
Not on that topic, no.
All right, thank you. Moving on to... The building department update.
Oh, that must be me.
I knew there was something else.
We have a number of things, please understand, we're, I know a lot of citizens are frustrated with our building department at the moment, we're still understaffed slightly, okay, a lot, but we're working on that aggressively. The Sheets project is well underway, they're in the process of, of making sure of their building and clearing that out and, and structuring a demolition. Their building plans have been approved by all departments, so as they get the demolition process moving, that will be well underway this spring and summer. We have cleared the path from the difficulties we were struggling with, with the prime storage, and we are reasonably close to a site plan review, is that correct?
I think we're, we're through the site plan.
So we have a schedule for them?
We're working on the schedule.
So right now, you'll see the second phase of the site plan of, for that property on the south side of Stevens, which has been sitting this way for a number of years. We've been pushing the buttons as hard as we can, and we think we'll be bringing that to you folks in the next month or two, and beginning to have that building and that structure be underway. So we're excited about seeing that. There is a old business that you haven't seen for a while, but we've finally been charmering through it. There's a car wash that was approved over a year ago in this building depart, in the planning, that has been now cleared. I think we have cleaned all their legal problems up, we cleaned all their drawing issues up, and hopefully we will see a, a building permit established to put that on, on 10 Mile in the next 30 days or so. We'll see what that, how fast they actually move. Both of the other marijuana facilities are in their growing, the one on South Grashit is submitted, they have to find a couple pieces of paper for me, but they've submitted their demo work, but it's not ready until I see all the paperwork that they need to submit. The one that's on 8 Mile is well underway, they were going to make some adjustments, but we required them to hold true to what they said. And so the red basket is now no longer there, and they have one more building to remove, and they're probably 75, 80% of the way done on the renovations on the inside of that building. So they're, they're well established in getting their timelines underway. Other than that, we're continuing to work on our developing programming with our vacant lots in our commercial buildings, trying to find out how we can create a cleaner record system and give you a better addendum of how many of our properties really are without businesses in them and how we can manage them going forward. So there's some updates that we're really doing, if there's any questions for me, any particular topics, I'd be glad to address them as you ask them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Myers? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we will go, we will open the second hearing of the public, at this time the second hearing of the public is open. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, no, I'm sorry. So the second hea, hearing of the public is open, you'll get three minutes. Anybody wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident, just a couple of things, I hope you are able to figure something out for Winter Sausage, that is one of the businesses in this community that are beloved, and for some reason it seems like the last couple of years or so our beloved businesses like Winter Sausage, East Detroit Bakery, Daroni's Hardware have been impacted by some of the changes that the city is trying to do, whether it's rerouting traffic away from their businesses, or messing with their parking, or, you know, in this instance, not facilitating their expansion. I think it's important that we support our existing businesses as much as we can. On the special meeting for the marijuana facility, is there going to be a notice, a public hearing published on that? And if so, will it have the correct addresses in it? My issue with it is, you know, if you're putting something out for the public, which I assume is sort of kind of a legal document advising people of what is being discussed here, it's not helpful if you have an incorrect address included in it. You know, the, the notice that was published clearly had five parcels, and, you know, come to find out that, five parcels for a special land use, and come to find out, they don't even want that fifth building, so why would you be debating on a special land use? And why would, you know, you be telling the public that you're having discussion on a special land use for a building that they no longer want? Other than that, yep, I'm looking forward to the master plan, hopefully we'll get some things put together a little more cohesively. And again, I thank all of you for all that you do, it's a lot of work here with the planning commission, and I really respect the effort that you all put into it for our city, and you too.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Seeing none, second hearing of the public is closed.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
If I may speak one more time?
Yes, you may.
Changing of the season, and since this is recorded and noted, maybe you see people watching it, we have a grass issue that we will begin to process, that'll start on Monday, where we've changed some of the policies last fall, but at this point, the building department will be responsible for identifying grass that is too tall and needs to be maintained. And then once that timeline of 48 hours has been given to each of those parcels, then we'll request a third-party company to come in and cut if it's not been in compliance on that, in reverse of what has been done in the last several years. That'll hopefully begin to start next week and see if we can get our team ready to go in addressing those subjects. So that's a new beginning for this, this summer. We also have modified and amended some of our rodent issues, and so my team is, is prepared now to begin to do some of the preliminary prevention programming pieces to help maybe eliminate some of that as we get into the summer. That'll also begin on Monday. So those are some of the, the in-house day-to-day routines that maybe don't hit your fan, plate every day, but they're a part of helping us clean and straighten up the city going forward.
I have a question for that.
Go ahead.
Just because it's all over.
Are you still Ohio fan?
Yes.
All right, then you can ask.
I will never stop being an Ohio State fan.
Well, just wanted to make sure, go ahead, any question?
Is the no mo may, are we doing any exceptions?
I don't even know what you said.
Okay, that's what I thought too. I didn't say anything.
I don't assume there's any exceptions. The, the rule that we're training the team to develop in their skills is consistency is the best powerful approach you have to making everybody equally treated fair. It's a big city in, in the sense of population we have, but I don't know of the no may, mo may, whatever, mo, it's not in my knowledge.
My guy was out last night and got my front and backyard for me, so I'm a happy camper. All right, moving along.
I just wanted to put that out there in case, you know, all these people with it all over the news and...
I appreciate that.
I, yeah. That's just lazy people. I'm sorry. Commissioners' comments, we will start with Mr. Stokes?
I have none, good to see you all.
Ms. Naylor?
Happy summertime, just around the corner, started getting warmer.
Which is good, we can get out and enjoy ourselves, but no other comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hall-Raiford?
Thank you. I'm really appreciative of that clarification between the medical and adult use, because it was confusing me as I was reading the information, it was like I didn't quite understand. So I really appreciate that. Being new, it's not necessarily an excuse, but I try to make sure I understand what's going on before I take a vote on it. So, thanks for that, and hope everyone has a good evening, stay dry.
Ms. Yulinski?
Oh, I just wanna commend the building department and everyone involved with Auto Clinic. I have never seen, it's so empty. It's a beautiful sight. Thank you for not giving up on that, because I, that had to be a battle. And again, I, I just wanna say, we're not hard to work with businesses, but businesses need to work with us. But yeah, it looks wonderful, thank you for that very much, and thank you for all you guys do.
Councilwoman Potolek?
I don't have anything today, thank you.
I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Mr. Albrecht? All right, thank you. I would like to thank everybody for putting up with me tonight. I have, in my lifetime and career, chaired a lot of meetings, but this is like the most extensive type of meeting I have ever had to chair. And while I'm comfortable most times, this was a learning experience. I appreciate all of you, and I really look forward to working with you in regards to a master plan, because we all care about this city and we really wanna see it moving in the right direction, so that's all I have tonight, thank you, everybody.
I was gonna ask you, you sometimes ask the, asked our...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If they wanted to have any comments?
Mr... Urbil, yes.
I'll just say it's nice to meet you all, I'm looking forward to working with you. I felt like I jumped in in the middle, but I'm catching up.
Ms. Hall-Raiford said you're not alone, and I'll second that.
But, but now that you bring that up, I do have a request, and we let you slide, or I'll let you slide on this one, but I didn't get my packet until Monday.
Yes. Well, yes, that was a miscommunication on my part about who was actually emailing the packets, but understood, won't happen again.
And at this point, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Would the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Hall-Raiford?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes? Vice Chair Sasek?
Yes. We are adjourned at 8:25. Thank you.